Welcome back. I officially call to order the August twenty-four, twenty, sorry, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, O and J Roberts Board of School Directors Regular Business Meeting. This is the O and J Roberts Board of School Directors Regular Business Meeting being held on Monday, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four at six P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance. Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on those serving in the United States Armed Forces, both past and present, the elected leaders for the state of Pennsylvania and elected leaders of our nation. We have much to be thankful for in our community. Please be seated. Item three, executive session announcement. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in executive session to discuss items in one or more of the following areas, legal personnel or real estate matters, on August twelve, twenty-twenty-four, and a board workshop was held on June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four. Number four, the superintendent's report, Dr. Stoudt.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Our administrative team, along with the maintenance, facilities and technology departments, have been working very hard this summer preparing for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which, as we all know, began today. It was a wonderful day. I had the opportunity to get into all seven of our buildings and just a great start to the new school year. At the beginning of August, we had two hundred seventy-six kindergarten students attend our kinder camp. This year, we have twenty-seven new teachers starting in the district. These teachers participated in the new teacher induction program and are eagerly working with our students now. Today also, we welcomed back five thousand three hundred fifty-three students to our school district. So fall sports are in full swing, and Friday, August sixteenth, was the annual fall preview of our bands. Our elementary, middle and high school bands put on a wonderful performance for their first event of the season. On tonight's agenda, we will be seeking approval for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five district goals, which were presented at the August twelfth board working session. Also on tonight's agenda, we are recognizing one retiree, Diane Albright, middle school paraprofessional, who was unable to attend tonight's meeting. The district will be closed on Monday, September second, for the Labor Day holiday. And, Mrs. Peterson, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We are going to move into public comment. Before I do so, I do have two agenda items that are being amended to note. An agenda item thirteen point eleven, approval of student activity, club advisors and student officers. We will need to amend for the class of twenty-twenty-six faculty advisor. It's, excuse me, it should say Marcy stands in March. And an agenda item thirteen point thirteen, the approval of reduction of East Coventry Elementary School escrow for roof repairs. Both highlighted amounts within that item should show as eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five. As this is an action item, it will be, need to be addressed. So those are two items that have differences than what is currently in the agenda. So in public comment, there are two opportunities for public comment. The first section is for information proposals and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to items on the agenda that will be voted on tonight. Speakers are to indicate your name, township of residence, and the items on the agenda to which your comments are addressed. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for a dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. The second section will be at the end of the meeting and is for residents to speak on any item. Also, if you have any question for the school board, please email all Board of School Directors at schoolboardmembers@ojrsd.net, and you will receive a written response. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name, township of residence, and the agenda item that you are discussing.
So I hurriedly dashed a comment by email off to you guys in case I couldn't get it all out here. Heather McCurry, East Coventry, I just want to say how disappointed I am by the choice of the high-
Could you please, could you please state the agenda item?
It's item number thirteen point eleven. Just want to restate how disappointed I am about the hiring of the girls lacrosse coach. Over the years, there are some sports in this district where it seems that the coaches are hired with no thought to the benefit of the children at all that want to play the sports. Rather, for some reason, it seems to be simply for the coaches' betterment. So if you gave confidential opportunities to the students and parents and alumni and let them chime in on the hiring, I'm sure that there would be more than enough information provided to not continue on or to make a hiring choice. So this summer, I want to share with you guys that this was actually, O and J was actually being gossiped about at a renowned summer playing league that covers large amounts of high schools and college players, right? We were being laughed at by these other athletes. Some data and statistics I wanted to point out really quick, in addition to the comments that you guys already know that were expressed by many people to you. Some, a little quick stat check I did was that there are zero females serving right now as head coaches of boys' high school sports. And at first glance, that seems to be about eight sports. Of the ten girls' high school sports, there are only two female head coaches, field hockey, and I'm including cheer in that, although that's kind of dicey because it's a coed sport and also a club. I'm not counting cross-country, indoor and outdoor track, and swimming, although of those four sports, only one indoor track is coached by a female. So I think you guys need to take a look at the hiring practices. It's in the best interest of the students to maybe take a look at that because right now you have other questionable items that come into play, Title Nine, Title Seven, Age Discrimination Act, the IDA, Rehabilitation Act, the ADA and Underpaa Law, the PA Human Relations Act, you name just a few. It's direct correlation with the female athletics experience and the coach they have. And the verbal berating alone by male coaches here in O and J over the years in front of players and parents on the field, on the court, is enough to really require a look at this. This actually, the behavior of that practice reinforces that females don't deserve to be in positions of authority, and they're not fit to teach other females this sport. It's fundamentally misogynistic, and also the unnecessary continuation of a patriarchal construct, both of which were to be addressed by Title Nine. There's a lot of other statistics here. I put them in my email to you. But one important one is only seven percent of athletes go on to play at the college level and only two percent at Division One. So when you guys actually put the focus on the sports here, that's not ninety-three percent of the kids, right? An incredible amount of money is spent on athletics at this school with no actual benefit to the majority of the kids.
Thank you.
Please do the right thing for the kids tonight.
Thank you.
We have one hand raised. Dana, if you can unmute and state your full name and township of residence.
Good evening. Dana Shaphone, East Vincent Township. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda item, but it's the district goals that I wanted to speak to. I wanted to speak to special education, master facilities plan, and also just a general comment about communication. With the goals, I had spoken at a previous meeting about the board considering a resolution requesting that the state increase funding for special education so that we can fully identify and fully support our special education needs students. I would like to see this added as a district goal, as something that you would all commit to work towards. I understand from the last working session that members of the board and Ms. Crumrine went to the state on funding around charter schools. I would like to see that same level of enthusiasm with the state around special education. So that would potentially be an additional goal. On the master facilities plan, I've spoken again at a previous meeting about my thoughts on that, and I guess primarily that I think that people looking to come to the district are looking first and foremost at academic excellence and rankings over the sports and facilities. And I haven't looked at the data in a while, but it was approximately forty percent of the nondiscretionary funding was being directed towards sports, athletics, what have you. So I do think, and I've mentioned this, we need to take a more recent, a current look and go back to the community. The plan is almost six years old. I talked about potentially a steam wing. There are just things that need to be revisited in the plan, and right now Forbes has said, or reported a statistic that seventy-five percent of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck. And to consider this level of spending at this time seems quite extraordinary to me. And then lastly, on the plan, I'd like to see an overlay with the community, with communication. And I'll just give you a couple examples. With MTSS and UDL, I'd love to see with these, you know, three-year, multi-year initiatives, I'd love to see a communication plan out to the community on these types of things. Another thing would be like restorative justice that was mentioned at the last working session. So I think that the plan, the district goals, needs sort of this overlay of communication on all these initiatives so that it's forward-facing to the community. Thank you. Have a good evening, evening, and welcome back to school, everyone.
Board Committee Report, six point one, working session. Working session was held on August twelve, twenty-twenty-four at six P M. The following committees met at this time, legislative and policy. Six point two, Chester County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Munson.
The Chester County Intermediate Unit did meet on Wednesday, August twenty-first, but unfortunately I wasn't able to attend. You'll see the Legislative Quarterly Report at your places, and I'm glad to answer any questions if you have any. And the next meeting for the CCIU board will be September eighth at seven thirty P M at TCHS, Brandy Lion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Six point three, Curriculum and Special Education, Ms. Seba.
The curriculum and special education, we need to not meet at the last working session. However, you have an update from the department. The curriculum department is busy this summer preparing for a new school year. Students were in our schools for extended school year programs, enrichment camps, academic courses, jumpstart, and kinder camp. The department assisted with the hiring of new teachers in all schools and hosted the new teacher orientation by welcoming over thirty new teachers. Summer work also included numerous curriculum projects and revisions for science, mathematics, and electives. As a result of a change of available services from the CCIU, the district has taken up the responsibility of organizing, maintaining, and supplying the elementary science classroom kits. A very dedicated group of teachers worked throughout the summer to develop a new inventory system for the science supplies, and they prepared all of the science resources for the new school year. Teachers will be able to view what is available for the classroom use and have additional materials delivered to the schools as needed. All teachers participated in professional development this past week. Topics included subject-specific sessions, the updated Skyword software, and time to review student assessment data. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seba. Six point four, Finance, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Harmonos.
The Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee has not met since the last meeting. Couple things to note. We removed approval bills agenda item from number nine in the June financial reports due to some software glitches that were occurring in our system, and we have support tickets into our vendor, and we will revisit approval of those items at the next board meeting. Additionally, tonight, we have several meetings on the agenda for consideration. Item thirteen point twelve, approval to participate in the Chester County Joint Purchasing Consortium for this year. By combining our purchasing power with other schools, we were able to save a significant amount of money for the district. We save over a hundred thousand dollars annually by participating in this consortium. Item number thirteen point thirteen, approval of reduction of East Coventry Elementary School escrow for roof repairs in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. As noted earlier, that was revised. Item thirteen point one four, approval of construction agreement with S J Thomas Company through the Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative for the North Coventry Elementary School Commons Classroom Conversions in the amount of a hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Item thirteen point one five, approval of construction change order credit for the High School Library L G I project, the amount of thirty thousand dollars change. And finally, item thirteen point one six, approval of agreement with K and W Design Environment and Civil Engineering for the engineering instruction, administrative services for the French Creek Elementary School Traffic Pattern and Playground Relocation Project. And the amount of that proposal was one hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmonos. Six point four, sorry, six point five Legislative and Policy Committee, Ms. Munson.
Legislative and Policy Committee met in the working session on August twelfth, and as a result, you'll see some policies for first reading on the agenda items. Seven dot eight, policies two eighteen, two eighteen dot one, two eighteen dot two, two twenty-two, two twenty-seven, and three twenty-three. Most of the changes involved are fairly simple recommendations from P S B A that change language around vaping and the exact way that our law enforcement agencies are referred to and don't really make a substantive change to how we do things in our district. And we will be meeting in another working session in September. I don't have that date in front of me, but it's on the public schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Dr. Malmazak.
The Personnel Committee has not had a meeting since our last business meeting. But once again, the summer was very busy for the Unit Resource Department. OGR hired nineteen new contracted and L T S teachers, thirteen new paraprofessionals, as well as new secretarial, security, and housekeeping staff. OGR will be hosting a support staff job fair on Tuesday, September tenth, from four to seven P M in the high school library to continue to fill these vacant supports positions. Job fair will also have a representative from our substitute service, E S S, to help staff substitute teachers and paraprofessional positions. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, agenda item seven. Seven point one, the motion to approve recommended routine matters consent items seven point two through seven point ten. May I have a motion to approve the following routine matters, which are at our items seven point two through seven point ten as action consent items? Someone, Ms. Seba?
Second.
Ms. Munson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, was that I for in favor or opposed? That was in favor, correct?
Aye, in favor. Aye, in favor.
Thank you. I will try to pause for our online delay. The motion passes. Okay, agenda item eight, recommended routine, sorry, eight point one, the acknowledged receipt of donations, contributions, and gifts. May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of donations, contributions, and gift as presented in this month? We are recognizing a three hundred dollar donation to the Middle School Leo Club from the Eagle Glenmore Alliance Club. I have a motion.
Someone.
Ms. Seba?
Second.
This month of Mr. Speller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one, may I have a motion to approve routine matters consent items nine point two through nine point four? May I have a motion to approve the following routine matters, which are items nine point two through nine point four as action consent items?
Someone.
Ms. Seba?
Second.
Ms. Speller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item ten, board discussion. Is there any board discussion at this time? Okay, agenda item eleven, old business. Mrs. Crumine, is there any old business?
No, there's no old business.
Thank you. Agenda item twelve, the motion to approve personnel items, personnel matters consent items twelve point through two through twelve point five. May I have a motion to approve personnel matters consent items twelve point two through twelve point five?
So moved.
Dr. Malmazak?
Second.
Mr. Chester, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, agenda item thirteen, new business, thirteen point one, the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five district goals. May I have a motion for the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five district goals as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Chester, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Malmazak, any discussion?
I do have something I wanted to ask because I asked in the last meeting to add somebody with special education experience in the discipline under student. Looking for which one it is here. The awareness of use of discipline practices and interventions. I did not, I don't see anybody that was added with that.
Yeah, I do not have the, my draft from the last time. I know there was, was one area where we did add the specialized supervisors, but which, which area are you specifically talking about, Mrs. Seba?
Under student well-being, increase use, increase awareness and use of discipline practices. That's where we talked about adding the special education. We're just under discipline. I'm going to ask for it in multiple places, so maybe that was added somewhere else, but I, that was the original thing I requested. Within the lead administrator sections? Yes.
We'll take, we'll take a look at that. I mean, obviously, that's something we could, we could look at revising and putting it in there. I'll need to talk with Dr. Ventman about that, though.
Do we have to hold up a vote to have it revised?
You could approve it tonight and then bring it back, that particular item back for revision at a later time.
But if it's approved and they don't bring it back for revision, then it's still approved.
Yes, it would be.
So, so again, I mean, obviously, we would, we would have them involved. We could do that, but if you want it in the document, then we would have to bring that back and add it to the document. I would, however, though, like the goals to be approved if we could, because I think the, the meat of it is there, but if we need to add another group of administrators and sections, that's something we could take a look at. Because although we have lead administrators, we have, this is really all hands on deck as part of the goals.
We can make sure he brings it back.
Yeah. Okay.
To counter that, there's nothing intrinsically wrapped around this being approved tonight. Like, it's not going to hold you up from moving forward in the direction of goals.
It, it would not. I mean, this is how we, we've started. We've shared information with the staff. We said they're not approved yet, but this, you know, these are the same goals we had last year overarching, so just the initiatives and tasks are slightly changed this year, but this would not hold up any of our work.
I think we should table it.
Is that a motion?
I move to table the approved, approval of the district goals until they are revised.
Is there a second? A second? Any further discussion? I personally don't think that this is a fundamentally significant enough difference to what the intention and wording of this goal is to require a tabling at this time. So is there a way to table that specific goal and approve the other two?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to moving this forward as long as we know we're going to get a revision. I guess that's my, like.
There would have to be some amount of trust that there would be a revision.
And then would we have to vote on the revised goals at a future meeting?
That would be correct, yes.
So why vote twice? Let's table it again and vote once.
Because we would then have, sorry, the, the delay, I don't mean to speak over you, Mr. Harmonos. I'm not getting the timing of the Zoom delay. I apologize.
That's okay.
Because it, we would, you know, starting off the year with clear and approved goals, for lack of a better term, is a, was a goal of, of ours and the work that we did to produce these goals. So you know, yes, would it require a second vote, but it would, but it would have goals in place for our community to start the year and not be in a holding pattern on all information this year.
So we could put, we could-
Sorry.
I was thinking we could post the goals and such prior to the revision. And if we approve the goals, we can post it, get it out there into the community so that we can, and such, correct?
Mr. Schubers, I have a suggestion, and I don't, I don't know if this is one that's amenable to the board, but are we able to actually amend the motion so we would be approving the goals? And just amend it that the names of the special education administrators would be added to the document as an amended motion?
You can do that, yeah, that would be-
Because we, you know, we have a certain number.
But, but right now, we have this motion to table.
Right, we have a table.
But we can, you can make a, propose to amend the motion to include that caveat.
So I could make a second-
We have a motion at a second. We need a vote.
Yeah, we do. We, we will vote on the motion to table.
Right, so with regards to the motion to table, I'll just tell everybody, I, I will not be voting yes on that because in my mind, this, the lead administrator's column is who is accountable. And the more people who are accountable, the more you spread that accountability out, the less responsible each individual person is. And, you know, from my experience in the workplace, I think it's more important to have accountability in a smaller group of people, so I'm not actually in favor of expanding the number of people who are listed in the lead administrators list to a very large group of people, because in my mind, that waters down accountability.
I would add, I'm sorry about any timing issue, but I agree with Jennifer. And I think this is a crust issue. Dr. Stoudt has said that he will make a revision. Let's move forward with the goals and then we'll see the revision.
I mean, in turn, we trust that the administration would be working toward these goals, even though they were not officially approved.
So we have a motion on the table to to, so we have a motion to table. So I, let's take a vote on that. And when we move from that, we know whether or not we're, because I don't want to go round robin on making an amendment to something that's being taped. So what?
Because I seconded, can I then? Because I didn't realize that was an option.
You don't, you don't have, just because you seconded something does not mean you have to vote for it.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Yes, you are allowed to have discussion and change your mind.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion on the ta, the motion is to table the vote on the goals. An I vote is to table.
Correct.
Okay, so an I vote is to table. Sorry. So all in favor of tabling the goals?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I take it as the nays have it. So we are then going back to our original motion.
Yes.
Which is our original motion of accepting the goals as written. Would anyone like to make an additional motion? Would anyone like to make an additional motion?
I would like to make a motion, I don't know how to say. A motion to amend.
The uh. The existing motion to include a requirement that the district administration add.
Somebody with.
Special education supervisors to.
Yes.
To the initiative task, I guess it would be the, the one, increase awareness of the use of discipline practices, intervention strategies and data to make informed decisions, so it would be that initiative that we would add special ed supervisors to that.
So there's a motion to amend, is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, so then is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'm not in. I will be voting nay on the amended motion, just because I think it doesn't leave uh, Dr. Stout and Dr. Betman space to determine if it's appropriate to add those special education supervisors to that list. Um, I think we have a strong enough working relationship that the trust exists where they would review it. And if they feel it's appropriate, which not times out, then they will, they'll bring it back for an amended. Goal motion. Just my opinion.
I agree with Warren here, sorry again about any timing on issue one, so.
You're good. Okay. Any additional discussion on this motion? Okay, so we are going to vote on this motion.
The motion to amend.
This is the motion to amend, so an aye vote on this is in favor of passing the goals with the amended.
Well, it's really to amend the motion, then we'd actually have another vote on the revised motion.
Okay, so.
Can we please state what we're voting on very clearly?
You're voting on the motion to amend the existing uh, motion, which is approval of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five district goals. With the caveat that the uh, district administration will uh, amend the one item as stated by Dr. Stout to include a special educate, additional spec, special education personnel.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So again, I want to make sure we're clear, because.
We do roll call.
Uh, I'm confused, because Dr. Rotoli, I think you had indicated you were going to vote no and then voted aye. Am I misunderstanding?
I think there was confusion about what the exact motion is. But I've, I feel we should approve the goals with the idea that there's going to be an amendment.
Right, so that's not what we're doing, this vote is.
To amend the existing motion to require the district administration to add the additional personnel. And this is a motion to amend, it's a subsidiary motion, so if this passes, the motion on the table will then be the revised motion, and you could have further discussion and vote on the revised motion. But this motion is to amend the motion on the agenda.
Okay.
So, and I would suggest a roll call vote, because it was a little hard to tell who was voting for what.
May I ask one more question, I'm so sorry, but if, if we vote to not amend at this time. You're saying we can still revisit this issue at a later date, like it can be brought up again, to, to, to add those people to the.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go, Mr. Carmine, would you lead us on a roll call vote, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Um, I'm just going to do it alphabetically. Uh, Mrs. Chevelle Fuller, this is the motion to amend thirteen point one.
I'm still confused, so this is to accept these, but there has to be an amendment?
No.
No.
We will be voting on the goals. This is not a vote on the goals, this is a vote on.
Amending.
Amending.
But what, what it will do is the, it will allow you to, if you vote yes, to amend. Then there will be another vote on the revised motion, which is the district goals with the directive to the administration to add the personnel, additional personnel.
But if, it also, if the vote is no on the amendment, we still vote to a goal vote anyway. So either way, we are still voting on the goals, we are voting on a motion to amend.
To amend it.
This line. And if, regardless of whether or not the vote is yes or no, we will still entertain the motion. To pass the goals. Correct, okay.
Subsequently.
I'm, I'm going to say yea to this.
Okay. Mr. Chester?
Nay.
Mrs. Evans?
Nay.
Mr. Harmonos?
Aye.
Dr. Malchek?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Nay.
Mrs. Peterson?
Nay.
Dr. Rotoli? Dr. Rotoli?
Nay, I'm sorry, there's the delay.
Thank you. Uh, and Mrs. Sabo?
Aye.
Okay, I believe the nays have it. Bye?
Yeah, five, four, the, the original motion's on the table.
So, can you refresh my memory, did we, we had a motion?
Yeah, we did.
And a second?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion and a second on the goals. Correct, Mr. Chester and Dr. Malmasak, with the original motion. Um, is there any additional discussion on this motion?
So at this point, we'll be voting on approving the goals in an unamended fashion.
Correct.
As presented.
Yes.
Well, I think that. There are people not happy with these goals. At this point.
So I'll say that there's still the opportunity to amend the goal to, that doesn't mandate Dr. Stout's staff, uh, staff to do something, which is why I voted against the previous uh, amendment. Like if we want to amend it to say. Uh, Dr. Betman and Dr. Stout come back with their recommendation on whether those resources are appropriate to be added, and then take that vote in hand, that seems more appropriate than dictating that they add stuff to their.
See, I, in, in my opinion, I think we would better to wait until they made that decision before we approved them.
If I can just.
I don't, I don't want to disapprove the goals, but I don't want to approve goals that need work.
Yeah, and, and, and I'll just add. And I'll just add that when, you know, whenever we're looking at, at discipline involving a special ed student, we are consulting with the special ed supervisor, so they are always part of our practice and procedure, so. The question is, you know, whether we need to insert it in here, because that is practice, when our principals are, the principals are all, are the ones that are dictating the discipline ultimately, but they are consulting every time when, when there's a special ed student involved. So I just want to be clear there that they are part, they, they are part of the decision-making uh, in the, in this process.
I, I'm just bringing back to my point when we had the working session, when I asked for somebody to be added, was not because I don't think that those things are happening, but when there's discussions happening at the table without somebody that is special ed experienced, that is my concern. Because we're, we're looking to, to use some different new intervention strategies, we're, we're building upon what we already have. So my point was having somebody with a special education background at the table while these discussions are happening. I felt was very important, considering twenty-two percent of our district has an IEP. And that doesn't include five of us.
And my perspective is that people who are not listed in this document are not excluded from being at the table.
I agree, but they're also not made to be.
Correct, but back to the issue of trust. I think we do need to trust our administration to make some decisions about specific conversations that they have, and who are the best resources to be relied on for those specific conversations.
Okay, so we have a motion that has been seconded, is there any additional discussion, or can we go to vote? Okay. Um. Mrs. Carmine, why don't we do this in a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely, um, I'll just do reverse alpha this time. Um, and this is a vote on thirteen point one as presented, district goals as presented, uh, Mrs. Sabo.
Aye with trust.
Thank you, Dr. Rotoli?
Aye.
Mrs. Peterson?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Dr. Malchek?
Aye.
Mr. Harmonos?
I abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Evans? Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chester?
Aye, with full support around April's caveats. This is stable, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it.
Hey, thank you, and I um. Sincerely appreciate the sheer volume of work that was done on this document, um. Not only by the administration and the staff, um, but by the board. Conversations like this happen, and um, because we see this as an important document, if we did not see this as an important document that was going to guide the work we all do this year. It would be um, easy to just check boxes, and that's not um, what has happened, so I appreciate everyone's attention to it.
Thirteen point two, the approval of conference attendance, may I have a motion for the approval of conference attendance as presented? So move. Ms. Sabo? Second, Ms. Chevelle Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thirteen point three, the approval of memorandum of understanding with the Chester County Intermediate Unit. May I have a motion for the approval of memorandum of understanding with the Chester County Intermediate Unit for the Title III Consortium as presented? So move. Ms. Munson?
Second.
Dr. Malmasak, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point four, the approval of independent contractor proposal, may I have a motion for the approval of an independent contractor proposal as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Malmasak? Second, Ms. Munson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point five, the approval of an early admission to first grade, may I have a motion for the approval of an early admission to first grade for student A as presented?
So move.
Mr. Chester? Second. Ms. Chevelle Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thirteen point six, the approval of a confidential settlement agreement and release, may I have a motion for the approval of a confidential settlement and agrees, agreement and release for student. Twenty-four, twenty-five, two, as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Malmasak? Second, Ms. Chevelle Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It does not, uh, motion passes, thirteen point seven, the approval of a confidential settlement agreement and release, may I have a motion for the approval of a confidential settlement and agreement and release for student twenty-four dash twenty-five dash three as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Malmasak?
Second.
Ms. Munson, any discussion?
I do, I do have a question about these, actually, so there's, there's a lot that's redacted on these, on these agreements. And we did uh, hear from Dr. Betman. Last about it before, so we never then see them again, so they don't want us to see everything on they being the school districts.
With. I, I, it's, it's in protection of the student.
Yeah, it's, uh, the redacted information would be personally identifiable information relating to the student. And um, it's common practice, when, number one, it can't be released to the public. Um, and number two, just uh, to protect that confidence, um, most, you know, most often, in most districts, they're presented to the board in similar fashion.
That we're just told about it, and then when we see this, we remember what.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thirteen point eight, the approval of a confidential settlement agreement and release, may I have a motion for the approval of confidential settlement agreement and release for student twenty-four dash twenty-five dash four as presented?
So move.
Dr. Malmasak?
Second.
Ms. Munson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point nine, the approval of transportation routes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, may I have a motion for the approval of transportation routes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented? So move. Ms. Chevelle Fuller?
Second.
Dr. Malmasak, any discussion?
Just, just a thought, you know, it's only the first day, but a quick overview of how things went would be nice. And if, you know, yeah, it's only the first day, so.
In regard to transportation? Yeah, um, well, like any other first day, uh, you know, obviously, we, we, we have later start times this year, but. Every school district I've ever been in, and my previous three years at O N J Roberts, on the first day of school, transportation is typically, um, kids are trying to find their bus when we do dismissal time. And so that was the same thing here today on our main campus, kids were finding, trying to find their bus, so it put us back a few minutes late, uh, but overall, it went really well. Um, but again, we will become more efficient uh, each day, and then typically, it takes about a week or so for everyone to get settled in, and then we'll be operating at our, at our efficiency that we'll be running the rest of the school year, so it did go well.
So are the, the times that the students are on the bus, is there a, a point at which we would have to do something, it's too long a time, or, or is that all analyzed when?
Yeah, Mr. Gray, our transportation director, looks at that, and if there are any uh, revised bus routes or any changes that we need to make, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, thirteen point ten, the approval of fall twenty-two, twenty-four community swim program. May I have a motion for the approval of the fall twenty-two, twenty-four community sw- swim program as presented?
So move.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Dr. Malmasak, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion. Motion passes, thirteen point eleven, the approval of student activity club advisors and student officers. May I have a motion for the approval of student activity club advisors and student officers? In accordance with provisions of section five eleven of the Pennsylvania School, School Code for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with the following uh, amendment. Uh, for the class of twenty-two, twenty-six faculty advisor, it should say Marcy Stanson Marsh. Sorry? Okay, I'm going by what legally I've been put. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chester, do I have a second?
Aye, thank you.
Mr. Harmonos? Any discussion?
I, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
Um, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and speaking with various people on the board and off the board, and again, we, we talked about trust with the last issue, I think we have to trust that the people who hire are hiring the best. And we'll just see how it plays out, but we have to trust, and we don't have a say, who gets hired seriously, so we have to trust that these are all the best people, and that they'll do a great job as advisors, coaches, et cetera. That's all. I appreciate having spoken with several people on the board about this. That's all. I appreciate having spoken with several people on the board about this. The last couple of days.
Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point twelve, the approval for district to participate in Chester County joint purchasing for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. May I have a motion for the approval for the district to participate in Chester County joint purchasing? And the award of bids for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year is presented in accord with the Chester County joint purchasing agreement.
So moved.
Dr. Malicek? Second. Ms. Munson, any discussion?
As Mr. Harmonos, uh, mentioned, this saves us a significant amount of money each year. So I think it's usually pretty much a no-brainer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item thirteen thirteen. The approval of reduction of East Coventry Elementary School Astro for roof repairs. Again, to remind you, this is one of the agenda items that has, uh, a correction. So I'm looking for a motion to modify this board's prior motion approved on January twenty-three, twenty-three by reducing SMJ's remaining contract by eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to a new amount of one thousand nine, I'm sorry, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty cents to take into account that the school district is paying, and this is where the, uh, amended item is eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to another contractor to perform parking at four dormers at the East Coventry Elementary School with all other aspects of the prior motion remaining unchanged. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Malicek, the second?
Second. Ms. Chevelle Fuller, any discussion?
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point fourteen, the approval of a construction agreement with the, with S J Thomas Company Incorporated through Gordian Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative. May I have a motion for the approval of a construction agreement with S J Thomas Company, Inc. for North Coventry Elementary School Common Area Classroom conversions in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-one cents as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Malicek? Second. Ms. Munson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thirteen point fifteen, the approval of construction change orders. May I have a motion for the approval of construction change orders for renovations to the high school library as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Malicek? Second. Ms. Chevelle Fuller, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen sixteen, the approval of ratification of professional services maintenance agreements. May I have a motion for the approval, ratification of professional services maintenance agreements as presented? So move. Ms. Munson?
Second.
Dr. Malicek, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, agenda item fourteen, fourteen point one, public comment. Information proposals and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to any item speakers are to indicate your name and township of residence. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. Also, if you have a question for the school board, please email all board of school directors, school board members at O J R S D dot net and you will receive a written response. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence.
Heather McCurry, East Coventry. I just want to clarify, the point when I made the comment before went to thirteen eleven and also twelve point four, which was the actual hiring part in addition to the appointment of the advisors and the coaches. Just want to remind you guys, there was a clear, clear problem when you hired the same combination of coaches last year. And so now you rehired them again this year and the people that suffer are the children. And also the school and the ranking, the team lost its ranking as a prior state championship team. That, that doesn't happen like that. That was kind of weird. And so what checks and balances are you guys going to put into place with it now? So nobody had any conversation here at all on it except for one person. But, but it's really confusing to the public how you can go back and redo the same thing that happened last year. You also have a new policy that you're going to have to look at again, which is probably the parent coaching policy. Um, I think you guys need to make up your mind what's important here, athletics or academics. Ninety-three percent of kids do not go on to play in college. So that's the majority of the kids here do not use sports. Yet this district has become so focused on the sports, including the drama with the Kutz property. I wish you guys would have some meetings, hash it out, let the public have some say into it to decide to go forward, maybe with a little bit more academics. The goals that I didn't have time to talk about, because we get three minutes, were kind of lacking in academics. So you guys really should go back and adjust them and also put checks and balances online. I did actually have a comment that I heard from a horticultural student that said they could really benefit from the use of the Kutz property. So it wasn't the fact that people weren't paying attention to the comments that were made that the demolition was going to happen. It was the lack of comments and involvement of the public and the students in what is the best use of the property, considering that study is two thousand and eighteen, so many years old. If the kids get to talk about what kind of furniture they want in the library, maybe they should get to talk about what they want to do with that property.
Dana, if you can unmute and state your full name and township of residence.
Sure thing. Dana Shafani, Spence and Township. So I appreciate everyone's hard work on the goals. I just would like to point out that for the public, I think the first time they were reviewed was at the last working session in earlier this month in August. And, and I'm sure most, most, you know, residents are still and hopefully you guys still enjoying your summer a little bit. Um, so in my mind, it was, you know, once, kind of once and done. So consider please maybe giving additional time in between that working session and when they come forward for final approval. Um, and then I want to add about special education because I was trying to cover those topics so quickly. But, you know, with the additional funding that we received from the state, which was again, um, presented at the last working session, um, it was said that, you know, inflation could wipe out all of that additional six hundred thousand that was above what we budgeted. So, you know, this again, I, I'm like, back to the resolution for special education. If, if the funding that the state is giving us is not keeping up with inflation, we have a serious problem. And we need to continue to speak to, um, the state and P D E about that and, um, ensure that we have the necessary funding there. And then, um, you know, that, that, that population of people to the point with the goals and having a representative from special education. It's, I think I heard Ms. Sabo say it was twenty percent. So it's, it's a large constituent population, the special education population. And that didn't include the five oh fours. So I do think we need to have them represented in these different, you know, areas when it comes to the goals. And then I'm just going to, again, just push on the idea of communication out through the website for programs like M T S S, U D L, you know, discipline. And, and I know that we can find these procedures if we hunt and peck through old meeting minutes, but it would be terrific if they could somehow, if I could go under curriculum and see, okay, here's all the programs that we're rolling out. M T S S, what does that mean? Who qualifies? What's the screening process? Just putting more meat on the bones on some of those things. I think there's a lot of like catchphrases, but, but not a lot of like understanding from the community perspective unless, you know, you're a little bit more immersed in it. So, um, I think that's really important as far as communication out to the community. Thanks so much. Have a great night.
Hey, agenda item fifteen, board discussion, follow-up and request for information. Um, is there any board discussion, follow-up or request for information?
I would, uh, I know Dr. Betman isn't here tonight, but I would, I'm going to bring it back as someone who voted against the amendment. But I do think we should take April's concern, uh, fully underhand and hopefully that, uh, Dr. Betman will be able to, in a position to speak about it at our next working session, um, so we can get resolution on that quicker.
Yeah, I think our, our conversation around the role of goals definitely, you know, got taken over by the, the procedures that are required for Robert's rules. Um, and so that, that, I think obscured some of the, the more valuable commentary that, that we do have, I think, trust that our administrators are doing the right thing. We're very proud of the goals that we've come up with. And, um, I am personally very grateful for the public commentary that we've gotten tonight on them. And I don't see this vote of approving the goals as the last conversation that we should have about the goals. And if we continue to get public comment that allows us to see ways that we can improve them even better, we don't just have to consider amending, you know, for this one specific purpose that we discussed tonight. We could consider amending other portions of our goals to make them even better because continuous improvement helps everybody.
That these goals, um, while, you know, setting the tone in the work of, of what is going to happen in the district this year are not, um, necessarily finite. They can learn, grow and change as we learn, grow and change. And I think that's, uh, I appreciate you saying this, Ms. Munson, important note.
And I do think we can always use better communications because I agree that M T S S, U D L and some of these other words that become very familiar to our teachers are not as familiar to our parents.
Want to keep communication topic. Is there a procedure in place for, for a parent to reach out and ask for specific information on a program? As opposed to trying to just dissect the website for information? Cause that, that is a little daunting. Yeah, anything in place like that? So are you talking about for the, for the goals? No, not the goals specifically, but like the M T S S thing, like maybe we, it is in the meeting recording somewhere, but it's not readily available on the website. Is there a way that they can say, be, try to Michael and say, hey, can you post something about this specific topic or send me information about, or tell me where it is? Sure, we can talk about. And I think there have been, there have been some talks in the work already with, with Michael and with Brad about that, with how we can brand it a little bit better, obviously. And, and the schools, the, the educators know the jargon and families that are involved know the jargon. We reach out and we're collaborative with the families when they, when they're involved in any of these programs that we have. But I think we could probably do a better job of our community at large in, in defining these. So I know it's something that we're looking at.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, um, I think that the, uh, goals are in general really well thought out. Uh, my abstention was really just, uh, I, I, just procedural and I, I prefer that we follow procedure. You know, I, I, I agree we should trust, but you know, you need to have procedures in place to, you know, make sure the right things are followed. But, uh, I'm especially, uh, excited for, you know, some of the, uh, discipline, um, work that, uh, is going to be done this year, uh, the restorative justice practices. I think that, uh, that's something that is, uh, long overdue and I'm glad to see the administration working toward it. Um, another thing I'd like to highlight is the, uh, spirit program for the high school. Um, I'd just like to say that, you know, high school students, if you're listening, uh, look out for this and volunteer. I think that's a, a great opportunity to help, uh, you know, uh, change the culture, um, at O N J Roberts. And thank you.
Great. I'm going to call it. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.